Good evening, everybody. This is the mayor and council meeting. It is February ninth at seven thirty P. M. Um, this is the work session, and would you please read the open public meetings announcement page?
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the February second, two thousand twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website.
Thank you very much. Roll call, please.
Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasola?
Here.
Councilwoman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Dela Wissio?
Here. Very good.
Mayor Wodensky?
Here. Um, now we have public comment. This is one of three times the public has to speak. Is there anybody out there that would like to speak? Hi, Mark. Come on up.
Here.
You state your name.
Twenty-two breathing place.
Excellent.
Um, I've been conversing with Sean M. Ridge, their DPW coordinator. And, um, he has shared with me, and I want to present this to you. And I'll email that also, so you have the copy of it. It's a shared services agreement with regard to EPS collections. And, um, something I hope you'll consider, um, it essentially allows a borough of Allendale to bring any collection of material to Ridgewood. They're going to be opening up their densifier.
This is just for styrofoam?
Sorry?
Is this for the styrofoam?
Yes. Um, and they're going to be sharing the facility with other boroughs who are willing to participate.
Mm-hmm.
It essentially comes to five dollars per twenty-five gallon bag, I think it is. Um, you can bring it as often or as frequently as you like. And, uh, it would allow us to have a place to bring it either to, uh, continue voluntary collections.
Mm-hmm.
So I think it's something worth considering.
Okay, sure. We'll take a look at it and see what we think. Thanks, Mark. Uh, anybody else from the public?
Okay, mayor. Um, James Thomas, thirty Arlington Avenue in Allendale, who is not present in person, but perhaps via Zoom, sent an email to the municipal clerk on January seventeenth, asking if his questions could be read on record at the next mayor and council meeting. Mister Thomas states, "I commend and congratulate councilperson Holman and the entire council on completing the sale of the borough's water system to Veolia." The following three questions relate to that transaction. Attorney Wiss will address those questions.
So the first question posed by, uh, Mister Thomas is what interest was conveyed to Veolia? In relation to the wells and reservoirs, does Veolia own defined property in fee simple for each? In relation to the water tower, which is on the Ramsey property, in relation to the pipes, ducts, valves, et cetera, which are beneath the surface? So fee simple is really a real estate concept. The transaction with Veolia is a combination of transferring certain property in, in fee simple, but most of the conveyances are easements that is right to have their utilities under property that is either owned by the borough, or owned privately, or owned by the school systems. So, uh, it is a combination to Mister Thomas's question of fee simple transactions, as well as predominantly easements with respect to the infrastructure, uh, that is located beneath the property, whether it's being conveyed in fee simple, or whether it's an easement, that is being conveyed in full to Veolia. So they will, uh, own, in essence, the entire operating system, whether it is, uh, pipes, valves, water towers, uh, that will all be in the ownership of Veolia. The, uh, and I, obviously, there's a master list of properties which more specifically specifies what I'm talking about in terms of that which is being conveyed in fee simple and that which is an easement. The second question is, "Veolia committed to the ten-year rate plan that was contemplated in the, uh, negotiations with Suez before their merger? If so, has the rate plan been submitted to the New Jersey Board of Public Utilities? Did the provisions of that rate plan apply to commercial, industrial, and government customers of Veolia, as well as residential customers?" Um, yes, um, the Veolia is committed to exactly the same rate plan as was negotiated between the borough and Suez, uh, before their merger. Uh, the provisions, uh, do not have any, um, special rate or exemptions for commercial, industrial, uh, customers. There is a, uh, a rate provision where the borough gets a preferred customer rate with respect to our, uh, fi- our fire hydrants for a specified period of time. Uh, the third question, "Without ownership of a water-producing and distribution infrastructure, Allendale no longer has or is a water utility. Accounts and debt associated with its former water utility are closed and retired. Will the water department be, uh, reorganized? What role will the staff have?" And the CFO was nice enough to, uh, to chime in, so I'll give her answer because it's actually more exact. Um, "All of the debt will be paid off through an escrow account. Some of the bonds are not yet callable. The only employee was the CFO." Uh, "Will no longer have, uh, you know, any function for the water utility, and all aspects of the utility should be closed out by the end of the current calendar year." So hopefully that answers Mister Thomas's three questions.
Thank you, Ray. Anybody else from the public? Wish to be heard. Seeing no one, we'll go back to business. Um, we'll have our agenda review. Um, we have an ordinance this evening, uh, first reading, um, to amend, supplement, and revise chapter twenty-six. Matt, did you want to speak to that ordinance?
Certainly. So ordinance twenty-three zero-two will bring our officers more in line with what other departments are making, uh, for outside overtime details. Uh, for instance, when they work a detail for a utility, uh, or utility company or something like that. Um, there is also a provision in there for the borough to charge an administrative fee for coordinating the use of the officer. Um, it does not apply, however, to borough jobs or nonprofits.
Perfect. Thank you very much. And we have our consent agenda. So these are things that are considered routine, but there's some that I'd like to read through because they are, I believe, noteworthy of all the great work that we're doing in this borough. Um, we'll be appointing, um, our, uh, QPA again, and as well as, uh, alternate prosecutor, our QPA. We've had for many, many years, Joe Citro. Um, we're also going to be authorizing another Clio officer for our schools. That has been a wonderful program that, um, is going to be continued. We, um, actually can formally appoint Joe Delawitio to the land use board. So he's the head of land use board. He's also second on facilities with Councilman Yakarino. And it is Crestwood season already, so we're starting to get some of our Crestwood fees on there, Red Barn fees on there. So we're looking forward to, um, a great year. We have, let's see, what else do we have on here? We are actually filling, um, a land use board vacancy with, uh, Jason Morzala, so it'll be great to have him on our land use board. And also, um, our senior housing, the borough, um, is going to convey its interest, um, as a urban renewal entity to the, uh, of, of senior housing to, um, AHI. AHI oversees our low and moderate income, income housing, as well as our special needs housing, so this is going to be streamlined, and we're very grateful for that, and thanks for all the work that you've all done with that. So, uh, that's pretty much our consent agenda. And I guess we can go to council reports because we've got some time. So who would like to go first? How about at the end there, Councilman O'Connell?
Uh, thank you, mayor. Uh, the second phase of the DPW auction is being scheduled for the near future. We're expecting another thirty-five thousand plus. Uh, we're taking advantage of the seasonal weather by getting some prepping done at, uh, Crestwood Lake. Uh, they've, they've been, uh, Ron's been real busy dealing with the Veolia staff members, picking up material and, uh, with the possession of the sale of the water system. And the downtown clock renovation is still in place, and will be starting sometime in the middle of next month. And the third and fourth phase of the downtown, downtown streetscape project are nearing completion.
Excellent. Thank you.
Thank you.
Councilman Delawitio?
Sure. Thank you, mayor. So this is, uh, this is my first report. Uh, we had one land use committee meeting on the twenty-fifth. Uh, I, I will admit it was my first meeting, so I was getting my feet wet trying to understand where we left off, where we were. Uh, I, I will say that I'm very impressed with the people this borough has. Ron Kissner, Anthony Hackett, Michael Lemonto. I mean, these people are very dedicated, and they do a lot for the residents of the community. Some of the topics we discussed was, uh, taking a look at our code, so started to go through that, see if there's any upgrades, changes to some of our code to kind of make things a little bit easier for residents, plus, you know, bring us back to where we should be in time-wise. If there's anything new or any changes, uh, specifically to tree removal, signs, uh, ancillary structures. So we're looking at that now. We discussed a few resident issues, a couple of vacant property issues, so property maintenance issues, nothing major, everything is being handled and, uh, looked at. Uh, we also discussed the possibility of making some changes to our application packet for residents when they come before the construction code officials, and they have to get a variance to come before the land use board. Uh, we have a very extensive and professional packet. Uh, want to look at adding some help sections for our residents, so it's a little easier when they come before the board, kind of like a cheat sheet, so that the board so they know what the board questions are going to ask, what they should be really focusing on in their presentations, and kind of make things a little easier for the residents when they come over the board. Uh, so that's pretty much where we, we left off. We did have a meeting this morning, our second meeting. Um, I don't really have my notes prepared for that for tonight, so I can talk about that on our next council meeting.
Perfect.
I'm very happy and, uh, very excited to continue on the land use.
No, thank you so much for, you just hit the ground running, and I love that you're already trying to help residents and look at something that could be better, better for residents because we're here to serve the residents, not to complicate things, so, um, and that can be very intimidating coming, you know, before a board, so that's great work. Thanks so much for that. All right, councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yeah, uh, well, finance, administration, human resources has been very busy, busy, busy. We're on version four of the budget. Um, still waiting on a few of our, um, capital numbers from certain departments to come in, but, um, I just want to thank again our outgoing CFO, Alyssa. Um, she's done an amazing job for the borough all these years, and we were able to welcome um, our new CFO on Monday, and she was actually able to join us at our finance, um, committee meeting, um, Allison Altano. And, um, Alyssa truly gave, I think, um, Allison a little taste of Allendale, quite literally, by taking her to the ABNG on Monday, um, showing her around town, so we're excited to start work with Allison. Um, we are setting a date for our finance advisory, um, committee meeting as well. Um, look for that, for those of you who are on it, coming soon. And, um, that's about it. Perfect. Thank you very much.
Councilman O'Toole?
Certainly. Thank you. Public Safety Committee had our first meeting of the new year this past Tuesday. Uh, one of the things we discussed were the difficulties that the ambulance corps is having, uh, manning the ambulance during the day. Um, one of the problems is that volunteerism is down, so we would really like to, uh, appeal to the residents, if anyone is interested in volunteering, that they should come out. Both the ambulance corps and the fire department is always looking for members. Um, it's a, a good thing to, to help out in the community. Um, we discussed some issues within the fire department, uh, including some of the apparatus and the future of those pieces of equipment. Um, and then we discussed some police department, uh, issues in person. All in all, we had a very productive meeting. Um, as you mentioned in your report, mayor, on our consent agenda this evening, we are appointing, uh, another class-three special law enforcement officer, uh, to be placed in the lower schools, Hillside and Brookside. This is a program which places recently retired officers in the schools, uh, similar to a resource officer. Um, it's been wildly successful. The schools love having them there, the kids love having them there, and the officers love being around the kids, so.
And I'm sure the parents love having them there.
Sure they do, too. Um, and this is a program where the school district is reimbursing the borough one hundred percent of their salary.
Thanks for bringing that point up. Excellent. Thank you, Councilman Yakarino?
Thank you, mayor. Um, the Facilities, Parks, and Recreation Committee, uh, had our first meeting of the year on January twenty-sixth. We covered a a varying degree of topics, uh, for Crestwood Lake. We're looking at the cleanup of the Fragmities, uh, beginning stages of a new concession stand through the capital budget, um, ba- maintenance to our band shell. Uh, we talked about ongoing discussions regarding our badges, and again, making things easier for our residents and streamlining some processes there. Um, I also started working with Tierney, um, to look at some of our two thousand twenty-three lake activities, so we have a a really good idea of where we're going. We have a lot of fun things planned there, um, and a couple more things that are in the works. Um, with Borough Hall, we're looking at some minor interior renovations, um, down in the clerk's office, maybe some new flooring, um, some improvements to this room, which will be ongoing over the next couple of months, um, and maybe some more informational pieces around borough to help inform our residents, um, with regards to recreation, uh, that are meeting. Director Kissner provided some ideas from our coaches to help assist with field maintenance and keep things on the up and upward there, trying to really involve not so much the DPW, but also where the coaches can help step in as well, so in the time when we don't have folks on staff.
Perfect.
Other than that, our next meeting will be held next Thursday, and we already have a few matters on the agenda, which I'll update at the next meeting.
Perfect. Thank you very much. All right, so we'll do, um, our, um, staff reports, and let's start with John Gill.
Uh, currently working on the February edition of the newsletter. I've got a slew of, uh, updates and things to put in, so please, if you have anything you want to add in, I'd like to get that out by mid next week, so, um, working on that, and just also in conjunction with starting up some of our Crestwood and going over equipment, making sure we're up and running and no last-minute surprises, uh, so we're kind of up and going with that.
Thanks so much. Linda?
I have nothing to report. All right.
Mister Wiss?
Thank you, mayor. Uh, actually, busy a couple of weeks, uh, with, uh, respect to the resolutions and ordinances that are on the agenda, working with the different committee members and also with the clerk's office to get the, uh, things in place for this evening. Mister Kissner, working on personnel, uh, matters and, uh, some land use matters. Actually, this evening with Councilman Delawitio and Mister Kissner, we did a little field trip. If you remember, there was a resident who was here last week talking about a possible conveyance of a portion of a borough property to him. Um, so we looked at the property today, and I actually communicated this morning a couple of times with that resident. Working with Chief Dillon on several departmental matters, uh, um, some manpower matters, some staffing matters, and personnel issues in his office. The vestiges, as the mayor knows, with respect to two-twenty are still ongoing, uh, and, uh, the water utility is, uh, uh, well, we had a meeting this morning at nine, and tomorrow it's at eight. Uh, so it's, it's pretty much ongoing, and, and a lot of it has to do with, uh, what the substance of the, uh, the questions, uh, tonight, um, were about. It, it's really dealing with the easements that we need to convey. Uh, I may have expressed this before, but since the borough owned mu- much of the property and also was the utility in the historic past, uh, a lot of times eas- easements weren't of record. So what has to happen is that, um, Veolia has to send out their utility marker, locate where their equipment is subterranean. Then they have to go out based on that and do a meets and bounds description in order to be able to prepare a deed that shows the easement for the utility that's already there. Um, so it's a, it's, it's a moving, uh, situation with, uh, Veolia being involved, their surveyor being involved, their utility locator being involved, their attorneys being involved, and us being involved on the borough side. So a lot of stuff there. Uh, and, uh, as the mayor mentioned, um, working on the Allendale Senior Housing, Allendale Housing Inc. transaction. Good in getting the, uh, the resolutions on the agenda this evening. Uh, Chris Bada and I and Tom Borshy from my office had a conference call this morning. Uh, and the, uh, the gist of that is that, uh, we think that all of the elements of the transaction should be concluded by the end of this month. So if all goes well, that should all be done, and I guess the only other thing is, as governing bodies are aware, we do have an outstanding litigation against, uh, PK with respect to, uh, environmental costs that the borough incurred, uh, in acquiring two-twenty-two-thirty. Um, so we're at a very formative stage in the discovery there. Um, and, uh, I guess this Monday, the attorney for PK conducted a site inspection. I don't know what he could see other than a building located on property.
And pavement.
Since, you know, but, uh, he conducted a site inspection, and I think we have our next case management conference with the court in April.
Okay. All right, and how much longer will that potentially? Don't ask a question, you know?
We all may be a little older.
Love these kind of things. All right, um, so I will do my mayor's report. Um, I just want to say thanks so much to the, uh, council, especially the new people, Tyler and, uh, and, and Joe, for really hitting the ground running. The committee meetings have been really great. Thanks especially to the council members who are starting to use Box, our filing system, so we can stay nice and organized, and everybody has access to all the info. Um, I've been working with the, uh, admin offices since last year on streamlining our Red Barn process. The Red Barn has become wildly popular, um, since COVID, quite frankly, and it was just taking up a lot of our time, so I just want to thank Linda and her team, especially, um, John and Amanda, for really helping streamline the process, again, making it easy for residents, but having the, uh, packet for the residents to put together before they actually get to our office, so, um, it's, it's, uh, a lot less onerous on our, our, um, administration, and it's easier for, uh, residents because they know exactly what they need to do, so, um. Uh, also, there's a New Jersey anchor program that was brought to our attention. It's a homeowners, um, can potentially get tax rebate checks. We put some information on our website today. Um, there's an application deadline on February twenty-eighth, so check that out. Um, also a reminder that the grace period for your first quarter property taxes ends tomorrow, February tenth. Um, two-twenty is completely demoed. The demo started last week. I don't know if anybody has driven by, but the building is gone, so we really look forward to the next stage. Um, there will be the seventy rental units that will be built in the back. We've actually already been getting calls from people who want to put their name on the list. Um, it's not our unit. There is, uh, not quite a list there, but, um, we will be talking to the developer. We are looking forward to getting, um, our community center and our gym built, which is going to be in front of that. Actually, we had a resolution authorized to go to bid for that today, so once we get those specs buttoned up, we are going to start, um, going out for bids, and we will be working in tandem with, um, uh, Hampshire as they're building their seventy units. So, uh, just look forward to that. It's going to be exciting times for Allendale. Um, it's going to be a great space for our residents. Uh, the space that we're sitting in now is basically all we have, so we look forward to, um, getting that going, and, uh, yeah, and just getting a, a new community center built, so, uh, that is all I have.
There's a gentleman seated there saying something about chopped liver. Mister Kissner?
Oh, I forgot you. I'm sorry.
Wow. Wow.
Sheriff of Operations slash Administrative Officer Ronald Kissner. Do you have a report?
I don't know. Sort of thing is already covered. Uh, I had written this down already.
You're kicking me.
I personally, I want to personally welcome Nelson Delawitio. Uh, I thought he was going to be a great addition, uh, due, uh, due to my dealings with him as a member of the holiday service. Now he's the president, and he's always been very helpful and very knowledgeable in what he does. Um, as Ray, as just the way I said just tonight, you know, we had our meeting this morning. We talked about visiting this resident, and Joe from work, where he came here and got dressed very nicely, uh, came and, came and, came and met us, you know, again, he's got experience and stuff. You know, he's on the land, he's been on land use for years. He brings something to the table. He was very helpful in what Rainey, you know, was looking for, and they're nice residents. Hope we can help them out. Um, I, I'm going to schedule a lunch meeting with two members of the ARC, Allendale Recreation, uh, Committee, uh, at ABNG, uh, next Tuesday. Start thinking about some spring season, uh, projects, some improve on the fields, which, as you know, we've talked about, I, what we did last year, uh, because we don't have the staff that we, you know, and the skills, uh, we cap, we can, we made capital funds, and we, we put it out for bid, and we kept the base pit ready. We do the sand, the clay to the fields, prep the pitching mounds, and it makes maintenance of the season so much easier, so, uh, the, these, uh, the two, the two gentlemen I'm meeting, uh, again, a pleasure to work with. It's just, we get a team effort, and they understand all limitations, and they work very well. Makes the whole project
Definitely.
very well. You know, we, we, they'll buy the face balls, the equipment, we, uh, improve the borough's budget, thanks to you guys. We buy the, the beady dry, um, the chalk for the fields and things like that, and, you know, one of our residents in town, the Mister Trino, uh, ran the Paramus Little League for a number of years, but, you know, individuals who had children who followed huge sports. Paramus was representative states, the New Jersey had, you know, literally championships, you know, nationwide and stuff, so he, he brings a wealth of knowledge, and he does, and he has children at that age now. Um, so again, everything, with the good of Allendale, everybody chips in, it's a team effort, and it really works. Uh, as, as Ray said, we also had some, uh, employee issues to deal with, um, and I want to thank Linda Dino, uh, our new borough clerk. Not, I guess that new anymore, really. A borough clerk. Um, it was her first go-around, and, um, she's a very sweet individual, I can say, nice person, and it, you know, and I, and I got unfortunate, unfortunate, I had years of dealing with employee issues. Um, and working together, I feel we really work very well as a team, uh, and, uh, and we're going to be doing some more additional things, but Wendy did a great job. I know it was tough for you.
Thank you.
But you were very professional, and you're a pleasure to work with.
Thank you.
And that's all. I wore both hats, and that's it. Thank you.
All right. Um, and Chief Dillon's not here with his report, and I don't think I forgot anybody else.
No, I didn't say.
I see. Okay, so, um, meeting adjourned. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, and for, um, a motion to adjourn, adjourn the meeting?
So moved.
All in favor?
All right, second.
Geez.
Good.
I'm all, just combobulated now. Okay. Uh, back in five minutes. Hi, everybody. Good evening. Um, it is eight o'clock. It is the mayor and council meeting, regular session, February ninth, two thousand twenty-three. Um, I'd like to call to order, and please, Linda, read the Open Public Meetings Act announcement.
In compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act, the notice requirements have been satisfied. The meeting dates for the year are confirmed at the annual meeting, are posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building, and on the borough website, published in the record within the first ten days of the new year, and copies are sent to the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger. Notice of this meeting by the February second, two thousand twenty-three sunshine notice was sent to the record, the Ridgewood News and Star Ledger, and has been posted on the public bulletin board in the municipal building and borough website. Roll call. Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Here.
Councilman O'Connell?
Here.
Councilman O'Toole?
Here.
Councilman Yakarino?
Here.
Councilman Delawitio?
Here.
Mayor Wodensky?
Here. Okay, everybody, please stand salute flag. I pledge allegiance to the public. Okay, next we have public comment on anything that's on the agenda, so if anybody would like to speak to something on the agenda, please come up. Mark? For the record. Thank you very much.
Um, find a resolution. With regard to the, um, the barn rental piece
Mm-hmm.
and the membership piece for the lake.
Mm-hmm.
Um, I just wanted to inquire, are there any memberships for, um, considerations for people who have low income to get discounted memberships?
So, um, we actually do have discounted memberships, uh, for cer- certain categories. If somebody has low income, they come to the borough, and I would say that we never turn anybody down. Um, um, so, yeah, so we don't announce it, but it's, it's something that residents do know, and we do have considerable amount that do come in. Yeah.
And that, does that also apply to, to use the park if somebody wanted to use it for, uh?
Um, you know, we take everything on a case-by-case, so I would say, I would say certainly, yeah, we we examine everybody independently. Anybody else from the public? Want to speak to something on the agenda? Anybody? All right. Um, so then next, we have approval of minutes. December fifteenth, work in regular session, January fifth, senedaya meeting, and January fifth, reorg meeting.
Probably makes sense to do the December fifteenth one independently.
Okay, so, uh, December fifteenth, do we have a motion to approve?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Abstain.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Abstain.
Councilman Dela, Delawitio?
Abstain.
Let's see if we have a majority of those eligible to vote. We have one eligible to vote, two eligible to vote, three eligible to vote, and we have two yeses, right?
I can vote. I know. Yeah.
No. We're good.
So you have some. All right, January fifth? Meeting, senedaya meeting, um, approval of minutes. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Okay, roll call?
Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Abstain.
Councilman Delawitio?
Abstain.
January fifth, two thousand twenty-three reorg meeting. Do I have a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Roll call?
Councilwoman Holman, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman O'Toole?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delawitio?
Abstain.
All right, so next we have All right, so next we have um, an introduction of an ordinance. This is the intro to the ordinance, the first reading, and the um, public will be heard on February twenty-third at eight o'clock, right here in the council chambers. The ordinance is twenty-three dash oh-two, an ordinance to amend, supplement and revise chapter twenty-six of the borough code. Can you please read the title? Pardon?
Motion.
A motion to um, approve.
So moved.
Second?
Second.
Roll call.
Uh, ordinance twenty-three dash oh-two, an ordinance to amend, supplement and revise chapter twenty-six, twenty-six dash thirty-one D of the borough code of the boroughs of Allendale. Councilman Homan? Councilwoman Homan, absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman Otul?
Yes.
Councilman Yakarino?
Yes.
Councilman Delawitio?
Yes.
All right. Um, then we have our consent agenda that we reviewed, a motion to approve?
So moved.
I'll second.
Roll call.
Councilwoman Homan is absent. Councilwoman Lovasolo?
Yes.
Councilman O'Connell?
Yes.
Councilman Otul?
Yes.